We're looking for is just to waive, permit the current holders to go from 10 to 20. There's currently three companies with 30 licenses in Wooddale. We only have one company that's requested an additional 10. And once again, upon recommendation of the attorney, it's just to permit them to go from 10 to 20 at the current time until we make the necessary modifications in the ordinance.
All we need is an okay by council then.
That's correct. We just need you to waive that.
I don't think we have to make a motion on that, do we?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that we allow American cab to go from 10 to 20 licenses on a temporary basis.
Second.
All in favor? Monziel?
I got a couple of questions.
Does the police department inspect these taxis?
Yes, yes, we do.
And the fee that we charge, I mean, are we in line with the surrounding cities? Are we too cheap? Because if the ordinance is so old, maybe our fee is too old.
We're going to take a look not only at that, but other provisions in the licensing section, and we'll be coming back to the council with a recommendation and for further action at a later time.
Okay. I'd like to get everybody's okay. Get a motion. Got a motion on the floor? Second? It's already been second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? No, no, no. Okay. This is, I'll give this to the chief about the permits.
Originally, it was brought to our attention from the alderman in this particular ward with regards to some conflicting signs which were posted along Prospect Avenue. We took a look at the ordinance, both which was passed in 92 and 94, and found that we actually weren't doing what was reflected in the ordinance. Since then, we've made several recommendations with regards to the change of this, and it's staff's recommendation that the proposed ordinance be recommended to the city council for approval. What we're in essence doing is is just making sure that the ordinance reflects what we are actually doing in practice right now. We're also accommodating for a one-month permitting fee for this. This is a residential parking permit which is eligible for only the people that live in the Georgetown Townhouse area and to permit them to use Potter, Prospect, Hoover, and Park Lane for additional parking beyond their need, which is provided in their parking areas. So, once again, we're just trying to make it a little bit more conducive for the residents to gravitate towards a three- or six-month permitting fee versus the one month. We've given them a little bit of a pricing incentive over there to go to those longer months so we don't have to touch it so many times. And secondly, is just to restate the parking for this residential parking permit.
Do I have a motion?
I have a question. Are these permits stickered on their vehicles like the commuter parking lot, or how are they?
They're very similar to the commuter parking lot. They're issued from the finance department, and they're displayed in the rear window.
And then what happens if these people have these stickers? Does our officers write tickets on, or?
Yes, they do.
Warning tickets, or?
We usually ticket them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Has Betty Rousch been brought in the loop in the homeowners association on this, and have they signed off on the changes?
Well, really, the only thing that they've been advised of is the fact that we are doing this. They currently offer about 45 parking spots along station drive that they rent property from Commonwealth Edison, and I'm very sure that she's going to be very interested in the way we're doing pricing on this so that they can follow our lead.
Okay. If we could, between now and Thursday, make sure they're in the loop on this.
They are.
Before the fact rather than after the fact.
No, they are in the loop on this, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other question or make a motion? I make a motion that we accept residents' parking permit two and three.
Just two, Alderman.
Just two. Just two. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nobody opposed.
Nobody opposed. Okay. Items for future meeting: revision of taxi cab ordinance, B, business district parking and residential streets. And I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? What?
Are you deleting three or make a recommendation to delete that order?
On B?
Uh... What are you, I'm sorry, don't follow me here.
I'm sorry, were you looking for a recommendation that we delete permit number three?
Yes, that would be in the ordinance that's.
I don't think that was part of the motion. I think it was for estimate number two only, if I remember correctly.
I'll revise my motion that we approve permit two and eliminate permit three.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Nobody opposed at all? Okay. All right. Revision of taxi, I'll read it, revision of taxi cab ordinance, future meetings, and business district, business, business district parking and residential streets. Anybody got any questions already? All right. I adjourn the public, I make a motion to adjourn public health and safety and judicial committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
These guys say they don't control the water, so I thought these are the guys that aren't controlling it.
This guy's phone number is in here.
Yeah, he's in there.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Can we move on? Okay. Well, I'll call the, oh, wait, the minute ticker. Talk, call the finance chair in order, please, make the, oh, well, same people are present. I need a motion to approve the minutes February 14, 2008. Second? Is there a second? All in favor? Motion carries. Tonight, we're going to try and move this through this pretty quick if we could. We are going to go through the rest of the funds that was given to you in your packet. Maggie, I think you got a PowerPoint. Am I right?
Yes, Chairman Wesley. What we'd like to do this evening is go through all of the other funds, not the general fund, which was done at the last meeting. So, Mr. Wilson is going to do the enterprise funds first. When we finish with that, then I will do all the other funds. And my suggestion would be that the committee ask questions as we're on each fund before we move on. And we do have some points where decisions, policy decisions are required before we proceed. Please keep in mind that all of these budgets are interrelated. So, for instance, if one fund is making a transfer to another fund, that's been taken care of. I will call your attention to one error when we get to it that I made in the Capital Projects Fund. But, but basically, as we move through, if there are no questions, then we would expect that council's directing us to proceed with this budget as it stands, and if there are questions or amendments, then we'll make those and come back to you at the first meeting, first committee meeting in March. So, Mr. Wilson can do the first part of this with the enterprise.
So, the first fund will be commuter parking lot fund? Am I correct?
That is correct, Chairman Wesley.
Okay. So, we'll do the commuter parking lot fund, so.
Okay. As you can see from the slide here, the revenues from the commuter parking lot come, the vast majority of them come through just the daily parking fees and the hanging placards that we sell quarterly for the residents to commute to and from on the train. We also have approximately $200,000 of developer contributions over the last couple of years that were put in there.
Excuse me. If you don't mind, Alderman Wesley, a question?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay, I thought it was more developer contributions, like maybe 3, 350.
Alderman Winger, there's one more still due from Gagliano for 50,000. We anticipated that would come in in this current budget year. I think the project was delayed, so it may not come in, but at this point, we haven't been notified by community development to push it off to next year. But that would be the final payment. Altogether, it was supposed to be 250,000.
So, your figures show that over the past five years or so, it's up to, it's only 250, and that 50 would make the 250?
The 250 is the entire amount of developer contributions. The only amount that hasn't been collected is the 50,000 from Gagliano.
Oh, that would bring it to 250, if collected.
Exactly. Exactly. And we're still showing it, we're still showing that it's in the budget, but we really don't know yet if it's going to come in by April 30 of 2008.
Okay, and I'll go back in my notes then, and I'll see if they, you know, match it. Because I really feel like it was in the three. But I'll go back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr., go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
That just reminded me. Was there not also on Timber Trail a per lot fee? I know there was some controversy whether that was or was not part of what was eventually approved, but I thought that developer had to make a contribution as well.
I don't remember that one. We'll take a look at those tomorrow and see what we can get for you before the next meeting. Okay. Continue.
Thank you. The expenses are just the basic maintenance for the lot, utilities, snow and ice control. The devices that were alluded to earlier by Alderman Lewitin to collect the money for the daily parking fees are under our purview as well. There were grant monies used at various times during the life of this fund for permanent improvements, and could be, again, in the future utilized for those needs. The proposed budget, the big ticket item in here is the train station that we have budgeted in here for 1.2 million, 350,000 of which is coming from the Capital Projects Fund, 350,000 from the Economic Development Fund, and the remaining 50,000, $500,000 from the fund balance buildup over the prior years in the commuter parking lot fund. In each year, the commuter parking lot transfers $300,000 to, excuse me, $30,000 to the general fund for administration of the parking placards and the processing of the cash for the daily parking fees and things of that nature.
Can I ask you one question? Actually, since I had a meeting with you the other day, in the budget for Illinois Tomorrow Grant, is that money not available anymore? And then the other one is service Illinois Tomorrow. What's the deal with that one? One's for 56,000, one's for 63. Is, are those grants gone, or?
They're, they're in this current fiscal year. 56,700 is the revenue that the city collects. And 63,000 is the city's costs.
Okay.
Okay? So, that, so in other words, Wooddale has to share a small part of that.
Right, but there won't be a?
No, there's no more of it. It was, it was one grant, I believe.
That's all I want to know.
And it has to be spent this fiscal year.
Thank you. Here's you.
And the platform lighting, got 124,000 budgeted and projected, so that's, is that part of the train station, or is that something?
Yeah, we have the, we have it budgeted in this current fiscal year, but we do not have anything budgeted for platform lighting next fiscal year.
Budgeted, projected.
Right, and I think the reason is we decided to try and loop that all together in with the train station.
Into the train station, correct.
Or for we, that was what I think we decided to do. Okay. Anyone else have anything on that fund? Okay.
At this point, it seems like the decision for number one was possibly made earlier this evening for the 1.2 million for the train station. We have that in the, in the budget, and we just want to make sure that that's something that you want us to leave in the budget and the way that we did fund it, so.
Is everyone in favor of doing that, leaving it the way it is? Or make some? Mr. Johnson?
I understand we're going forward, and I support that, but I anticipate you are filing for SDP and CMAC funding as well, which we would use to replace the general revenue.
Can we, can we, uh, move on? Okay. Well, I'll call the, oh, wait, the minute ticker. Talk, uh, call the finance chair in order, please. Make the, oh, well. Same people are present. I need a motion to approve the minutes, February fourteenth, two thousand eight.
So moved.
Second. Is there a second? All in favor? Motion carries. Um, tonight, I'm wait, we're gonna try and move this through this pretty quick if we could. Uh, we are going through the rest of the, the funds that was given to you in your packet. Uh, Maggie, I, I think you got a PowerPoint. Am I right?
Yes, Chairman Wesley.
Okay.
What we'd like to do-
No, okay, go ahead.
What we'd like to do this evening is go through all of the other funds, not the general fund, which was done at the last meeting. So Mr. Wilson is going to do the enterprise funds first. When we finish with that, then I will do all the other funds. And my suggestion would be that, um, the committee asks questions as we're on each fund before we move on. And we do have some points where decisions, policy decisions are required before we proceed. Um, please keep in mind that all of these budgets are interrelated. So, for instance, if one fund is making a transfer to another fund, that's been taken care of. I will call your attention to one error when we get to it that I made in the, in the capital projects fund. Um, but, but basically, as, as we move through, if there are no questions, then we would expect that council's directing us to proceed with this budget as it stands. And if there are questions or amendments, then we'll make those and come back to you at the first meeting, first committee meeting in March. So, Mr. Wilson can do the first part of this with the enterprise.
So the first fund will be commuter parking lot fund, am I correct?
That is correct, Chairman Wesley.
Okay. So we'll do the commuter parking lot fund, so. Okay. Go ahead, Brad.
Okay, thank you. As you can see from the slide here, the revenues from the commuter parking lot come, the vast majority of them come through just the daily parking fees and the hanging placards that we sell quarterly for the residents to commute to and from on the train. We also have approximately two hundred thousand dollars of developer contributions over the last couple of years that were put in there.
Excuse me, um, if, if you don't mind, Alderman Wesley, question?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay, I thought it was more developer contributions, like maybe three, three fifty.
Alderman Winger, there's one more still due from Gagliano for fifty thousand. Um, we anticipated that would come in in this current budget year. Uh, I think the project was delayed, so it may not come in. But at this point, we haven't been notified by community development to push it off to next year. But that would be the final payment. Altogether, it was supposed to be two hundred and fifty thousand.
So your figures show that over the past five years or so, it's up to, it's only two fifty, and that fifty would make the two fifty?
The, the two fifty is the entire amount of developer contributions. The only amount that hasn't been collected is the fifty thousand from Gagliano.
Oh, that would bring it to two fifty, if, if collected.
Exactly. Exactly. And we're still showing it, we're still showing that it's in the budget, but we really don't know yet if it's going to come in by April thirtieth of two thousand eight.
Okay, and I'll go back in my notes then, and I'll see if they, you know, match it. Because I really feel like it was in the three. But I'll go back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr., uh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, that just reminded me, was there not also on Timber Trail a per lot fee? I know there was some controversy whether that was or was not part of what was eventually approved. But I thought that developer had to make a contribution as well.
I don't remember that one, but.
We'll, we'll take a look at those tomorrow and see what we can get for you before the next meeting.
Okay. Continue.
Thank you. The expenses are just the basic maintenance for the lot, um, utilities, snow and ice control. The devices that were alluded to earlier by Alderman Lewitin to collect the money for the daily parking fees are under our purview as well. There were grant monies used at various times during the life of this fund for permanent improvements. And could be, again, in the future utilized for those needs. Uh, the proposed budget, the, the big ticket item in here is the, the train station that we have budgeted in here for one point two million. Three hundred and fifty thousand of which is coming from the capital projects fund, three hundred and fifty thousand from the economic development fund, and the remaining fifty thousand, five hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance buildup over the prior years in the commuter parking lot fund. In each year, the commuter parking lot transfers three hundred thousand dollars to, excuse me, thirty thousand dollars to the general fund for administration of the parking placards and the processing of the cash for the daily parking fees and things of that nature.
Can I ask you one question? Actually, since I had a meet with you the other day. Um, in the budget for Illinois Tomorrow Grant, i- is that money not available anymore? And then the other one is, uh, service Illinois Tomorrow. What's the deal with that one? One's for fifty-six thousand, one's for sixty-three. Is, are those grants gone, or?
They're, they're, in this current fiscal year. Fifty-six thousand, seven hundred is the revenue that the city collects.
Right.
And sixty-three thousand is the city's costs.
Okay.
Okay? So that, so in other words, Wooddale has to share a small part of that.
Right, but there won't be a-
No, there's no more of it. It was, it was one grant, I believe.
That's all I want to know.
And it has to be spent this fiscal year.
Thank you. Here's you.
And, uh, the platform lighting, got a hundred and twenty-four thousand budgeted and projected. So, that's, is that part of the train station, or is that something?
Yeah, we have the, we have it budgeted in this current fiscal year, but we do not have anything budgeted for platform lighting next fiscal year.
Budgeted, projected, oh wait.
Right, and, and I think the reason is we decided to try loop that all together in with the train station.
Into the train station, correct.
Or for we, that was what, I think we decided to do. Okay? Anyone else have anything on that fund? Okay?
At this point, um, it seems like the decision for number one was possibly made earlier this evening, uh, for the one point two million for the train station. Um, we have that in the, in the budget, and we just want to make sure that that's something that you want us to leave in the budget and the way that we did fund it, so.
Is, is everyone in favor of doing that, leaving it the way it is? Or make some? Mr. Johnson?
I understand we're going forward, and I support that. But I anticipate you are also filing for SDP and CMAC funding as well, which we would use to replace the general revenue.
Yeah, we, we've already been over that, and we did apply for that, but there's still no guarantee that we're gonna get that. So we're, we're projecting the maximum scenario.
But if we do get it, we'll go back in the general fund, no doubt about it. Mr. Winger?
What other options could you suggest instead of using the economic development, um, three hundred and fifty thousand out of that? Are there any other suggestions that you can come up with?
Alderman Winger, you could take it all out of the capital projects fund, because there still will be a considerable fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, and even at the end of next fiscal year. But, um, as the early discussion indicated, with the street program and the, the dedication of the council to keeping a street program going every year, really don't want to cut into that. The city manager and Mr. Wilson and I discussed this with Alderman Wesley, and we decided that it certainly was a candidate for economic development, getting this train station. It's almost like the kickoff of the city of Wooddale's economic development plan. So those funds were available. They came originally from excess building permit fees. They, it was, it seemed to us to be a, a good match to fund, fund the rest of it for, for three hundred and fifty thousand from that fund. Uh, and there really aren't any other places to go except capital projects, and we're already taking three hundred and fifty thousand out of there.
And then any type of, um, money from tourism fund, would that apply? The, the tourism fund, even if it were, you know, a hundred thousand, or?
Um, well, you'll, when we get to the tourism fund, you'll see we've pretty much used up the tourism.
Okay, because I think when I looked at it, it didn't look, okay, well, maybe things changed, okay.
And the other item on the decision points was the platform lighting that was put on there primarily as a contingent, uh, item for discussion should the train station have not been decided to move forward. So, so that's kind of a moot point at this point.
You okay? Mr. Johnson? Mayor Johnson?
Sorry, trying to find some additional money. Was the thirty thousand in here from Itasca Bank? Is that still part of the funding? I thought Itasca Bank was making a contribution in exchange for us putting in the, uh, cash terminal. I thought Mr. Williams had negotiated some kind of cash contribution from Itasca.
That's the first we've heard of that, Mr. Mayor.
Perhaps we could follow up, perhaps we could follow up with that at lunch tomorrow.
I do too, yeah, we remember.
We can certainly work that in. We can certainly work that in once we find out the details of it.
Actually, one more thing, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Can, can you give us the list of what developers you do show involved in the two hundred thousand? So then when I go back, like, I, I'll know which one to look for.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, any more on that fund, or can we move on? Any more questions? Next one. Thank you.
Next we move on to the sanitation fund, which is for the refuse collection throughout the city. Uh, the residents, uh, are billed monthly through their utility bills, and we pay allied waste monthly for their service to provide for us for refuse and recycling service. Uh, one point to note, we are going to be coming to you in the near term to revise part of the ordinance as it relates to the rate structure for the sanitation fund. Uh, there's a way to, to maximize the ordinance a little bit, just to reflect the true intent of the ordinance as opposed to the way it was constructed originally back a number of years ago. Can I move on?
Christine?
I'm sorry, just a logistical question. I, I'm still expecting we're gonna go through the detail. And, and is that not the master plan, and?
You wanna go through every, everything in, though?
Well, well, that's what we usually do.
Okay.
And, and, and are we suggesting we're not gonna do that this year?
No, I-
I, I've always remembered going through, through each fund.
Every single line item? We've never done that, at least not since I, I've been here in Wooddale.
Each fund, and then we say, oh, are there any questions? Like, Alderman Wesley wouldn't call out each line, but, but we would still go through the fund itself and say, okay, what's the next one?
Okay. I thought we were doing that now, bring it out. I would think that if, if there was any questions on, on this, it was in your packet and you would have highlighted it and brought it up. I mean, if you want, are, are you talking about going through each sheet here?
Well, it, it, I guess as long as we understand what we're doing, because sometimes when we do an over slides, it's the precursor to, to the next step. But if you want to do them together, just let us know that, so we can have our detail sheets out. I, I didn't realize that's what we were doing, or else I'd have the detail in front of me, and I, and I'd raise my question when I had a highlighted item.
All right, well, fine, we'll go through everything. Sanitation, the first page. Does anyone have a question on that one? Here's you.
I've got a question. And, uh, towards the bottom, when it says funds served plus or deficit, we're running a deficit, is that just because of the, we bought the containers this year? Otherwise, we seem to be positive. I mean, we used to be positive, like forty-one thousand, fifty-three thousand. Now we're de- deficit projected twenty-six thousand.
Yes, that is primarily related to the, uh, the refuse totter program that we implemented this year.
Because, I mean, we spent the twenty-nine thousand, which I know, I mean, it was all part of the deal and whatnot. Why were we making, did something happen before we were making fifty-three thousand a year, or forty-one thousand those, in those two years? So even if we take out the thirty thousand, we should, still should have had like a twenty thousand dollar profit? No? Sorry, Maggie, maybe I'm-
You've got one line item there for fifty thousand dollars for the refuse containers. That'll do it. This fund runs real close to the bone. The way the rate structure is set up right now, allied waste charges, three separate fees to the city, one for regular garbage, one for recycling, and one for yard waste. Okay?
Right.
To that, the city adds an administrative fee, and that's what Mr. Wilson was referring to. Right now, I think the ordinance states an actual dollar amount, when it should actually be a percentage. I mean, it's less than a dollar, but it, it, it needs to be added on to the fees. Um, we found that several years ago, nothing had been added on for administration, and yet the, the thirty thousand dollars was being transferred to the general fund every year, which is a sure way to make this fund go into the red. You'll find throughout, uh, maybe looking back eight to ten years, that pretty much every other year, the city has to buy the recycling bins, and then we have enough to last us for two years. So you'll see a fluctuation there. Revenues stay the same, but the expenditures go up every other year for that. So we've got ref, we've got recycling bins this year, and we have the fifty thousand refuse containers. That's seventy thousand dollars, that, so that's what took care of the fund balance and caused this deficit. And then in future years, it fixes itself again.
When you say refuse containers, you're talking about the fifty thousand going to the general fund? You missing it?
No, I was talking about the-
The refuse containers with twenty nine-
Maybe I'm on the wrong line. The refuse containers are twenty-two thousand. And then we also had recycling bins. I believe in the-
A hundred and fifty dollars?
No.
Alderman, please see, there, there are two lines in the budget where you're looking for fifty thousand dollars. There's one to the general fund for fifty thousand, and then two lines above that, directly below the forty-seven hundred dollar amount for the purchase of the refuse containers, the totters that we, we went through and sold.
What's the refuse containers up at the top for twenty-nine thousand?
That's the revenue side of it. That's the money we took in from the sale of the containers.
I got you.
And, and the variance between the two is the twenty-five dollar discount that the council approved.
Okay. Question on postage? Everyone happy with that one? Clean air count, thousand dollars?
Can I interject? I think a, a better way to go about it is if anybody has a question, they can state it instead of going line item by line item. I think we should do it that way. So when we're going over the PowerPoint, if there's any questions within that section of the PowerPoint, that's when they can be addressed.
Why does the sense of the council, they want to go through it all?
Well, why go line item through line item if there's no question? If somebody has a question on a line item, they'll bring it up.
It, it, are you okay with that? Okay. Then we'll go, go back to the PowerPoint.
Okay, we're moving on to the Water and Sewer Administration Fund for the Water Fund subsection Administration. I know in speaking with Chairman Wesley, uh, earlier this week, he had questioned why this particular division had increased so much, uh, over previous years. And the primary reason is the professional services line for this, uh, particular division. In that line item itself is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the wastewater treatment plant study, and the rest are lined out there. Uh, the industrial pretreatment is from the federal EPA, so we don't have much of an option there. Topographic study and construction for the north plant restriction.
On, on that question, I know I talked about the, uh, maybe Gary could, is that the study that's going to be going on now with, uh, um, oh, God, what's it for now, do we have a study?
Water and Sewer Administration.
Who's doing our study now for a treatment plant? For work on that?
Bax.
Bax in Woods. Is that for this? A hundred and fifty?
No, this one hundred and fifty thousand is in there right now generically. And council, it is anticipated that council's going to continue to go forward on that project. Uh, so this is, these are funds that are in there to fund a continuation of the big picture study. Not identified for any one particular study at this point.
Okay. Anyone having? Oh, oh, go ahead, finish your PowerPoint.
Okay, before we move on to, you know, the slides here are, are meant to illuminate the highlights within each division. Um, it says we move to the next slide, it is the next division. So if there are any other questions within this division, now would be the appropriate time.
Mayor Johnson?
Gary, could you go over for me, what's the topographic survey?
We're going to be performing water and sanitary sewer design projects in-house. Really, the only aspect of that design that we, we won't be doing in-house is to hire out the surveying, to do the, the topographic survey, to get the base maps for us, and then we can design on top of those.
Water and Sewer Fund, does anyone have any questions on that? Okay?
And move on to the Public Utilities Division of Water and Sewer Fund. Uh, this is the, part of the budget where, uh, actually the water revenues come in from the sale of water that we, that we have. Currently, the rate is, uh, four eighty per thousand plus two dollars and a fixed fee. Uh, but please bear in mind that per the ordinance, which you passed a couple of years ago on laying out the multi-year structure, uh, in November, the rates will be going up to five oh five per thousand gallons, and a flat fee of two twenty-five per thousand, uh, per billing period. We also, uh, receive additional revenues into this fund through these cell towers, uh, that are placed on top of our water towers throughout the city. Uh, the expenses consist, the largest component is the water purchase from the DuPage Water Commission. Also, um, your standard operational costs, utilities, personnel, commodities, uh, and part of the debt service for the DuPage Water Commission. Uh, the fund also transfers two hundred thousand dollars to the general fund for administrative costs to help offset, you know, our time in, in phone calls and, uh, mailings and office space and things of that nature. Uh, one thing just to be aware of when looking at this, currently, our rate from the DuPage Water Commission is a dollar four per thousand gallons. A couple of years ago, they did drop that down from one twenty-four, uh, down to a dollar four. And at that time, they also set aside all their reserve funds for, uh, the rate stabilization and, you know, some of the emergency disaster funds, um, the reserves that we spoke of a few meetings ago when we presented their audit to you. Um, we'd have gotten word that they are planning on increasing their rates per the city of Chicago. At the current time, tentatively fifteen percent next year, or this, this current year. Fifteen percent the following year, and fourteen percent the year after that, which is in a, a straight addition is forty-four percent, but in reality, it actually calks out to fifty-one percent. So if that does go through this dollar four rate, uh, at a fifteen percent increase, we'll go up to a dollar twenty, which is what we had predicted the cost out to be in this budget. So if you're looking through the budget sheets and see the cost of water purchased at a dollar twenty per thousand, we kind of tentatively figured that in, so we weren't, uh, caught off guard and didn't have to come back for a huge budget amendment later on in the year as it relates to water purchase.
And, uh, on the last sheet in this, what is this? Vitsin or Vitsin, one thousand seven hundred and ten dollars for five months, and what is that?
Sure, the Vitsin trailer park, uh, is, is a special circumstance, the way they're built for, uh, for their sewer. Uh, because we, we don't actually meter all of the individual units in there. So a number of years back, we devised the-
Oh, so that's the one.
They got one meter, right?
Over there on Wooddale Road, you're talking about, okay.
Ms. Bow.
We have a meter for some of the units.
And, and for the rest of the units, we had to come up with an estimate. So a few of them are metered, and the rest are on one. And, uh, that's how we did it.
Mr. Coles?
Some are on well. He has a wall in there, too, that he has some of the trails on.
Well, and that's why we have the special rate for the sewer, because, um, it doesn't follow along with water.
Where's that somewhere going?
Okay.
If anyone's curious as to how that rate's devised, I do have that, uh, if anyone would like to go over it.
Do we have anything? Done with that one? Any questions on that one? Concerns? Okay?
Moving on to the Sewer Division, uh, the Wastewater Division. Currently, our fee is four twenty-five per thousand, two sixty flat fee. Again, as per the ordinance in November, that is going to go up to four seventy-five, uh, per thousand, and a flat of two seventy. Uh, and again, as with the Water Fund, uh, the Public Utilities Fund, uh, you know, personnel utilities, that's your standard cost of doing businesses rolled into this. And the wastewater fund also makes a transfer of two hundred thousand dollars for the same reasons as the public utilities, office space, phones, lighting, things of that nature.
I have, um, one question. On the one line item capital outlight, other equipment, um, twenty-four thousand, could you tell me what that other equipment may be, or?
Bear with us, one more-
Oh, that's fine. Uh, count number six, six, four, two, two, dash, six, dash, oh, two.
Bear with us one moment, we're going to-
Oh, that's fine. I'm sorry, I thought I had all my questions.
Oh, yeah, okay. So the other equipment, sorry, I, and I'm looking at the book upside down here from Brad. The other equipment, twenty-four thousand, consists of replacement of a trailer, a utility trailer that, that's used to like haul like the Bobcat, and also pretreatment samplers, uh, that we need to purchase this year as part of the pre-treatment program.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Okay. Carry on.
There's a breakdown of the entire fund, uh, and how it breaks out expense-wise. One thing to bear in mind, and this will get vetted out, um, a little bit more when we go to the Capital Projects Fund, is that, uh, this eleven point four percent of capital projects is the part that the Water Fund can actually sustain at the current time. There's another seven hundred thousand dollars of water main and sewer main replacement that's being funded out of the Capital Projects Fund. Uh, so, you know, currently, the fund is in a decent, it's in a, it's in the black and on a cash basis. But if we were to actually expense everything, capital, on a capital project side that should come out of this fund, it would be significantly upside down at the current time. I mean, like I said, that will be vetted out a little bit more, uh, in the Capital Project slides.
Any questions on that?
And as you look at the last slide here for the Water and Sewer Fund, it does show a deficit. However, that's- a deficit, however, that's on a total accounting basis. If, just on a cash basis, there's four hundred and thirty thousand dollars of depreciation in that expense number, and the depreciation is not a cash expense on a cash basis, cash basis, excuse me. The fund is actually, to the good, about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars on a cash basis. The depreciation is just a way to help smooth the cost of replacing some of the infrastructure by spreading its useful life out, the cost of it over its useful life.
Alderman Wesley, one other comment about the water and sewer fund in general. Although the council did vote to increase water and sewer fees two years ago, and we have followed along with that, you'll see that we still have almost one point two million of capital projects in two funds just for the water and sewer fund this year, and that's only going to get bigger, not smaller. So what this tells you is that the rates are just barely helping the fund hold its own. And keep in mind that the entire rebate from the DuPage Water Commission was deposited in this current fiscal year, and still, the fund has not been helped very much because this fund is run so close to the bone. So when we do the rate study, part of the problem and part of the goal will be to set rates appropriate, appropriately high enough to cover these capital needs. Because at some point, despite the fact that water and sewer mains are going through the capital projects fund along with roadway projects, there's still going to be increased capital needs in the water and sewer fund, and that is not even considering a wastewater plant. It doesn't even take that into account. So we're pleased that this fund can handle what it can handle this year, but without current, constant rate increases, and hopefully, DuPage Water Commission holding the line on rate increases for the actual water, this fund is not going to get better anytime soon.
Maggie, also, back me up here, isn't this also the people that have not paid their water bills to that put this fund in?
No, it's not, no, because this is based, this is strictly revenues and expenditures. What happens when the city issues a bill? We pick up a revenue, but we also pick up an accounts receivable, and that's on the balance sheet. And so when people pay those bills, the number in accounts receivable goes down and the number in cash goes up. It never affects this revenue number. Having said that, though, we've had to make some concessions to people who, well, we found, you'll recall, one that came to the council in executive session. This had to do with a business that hadn't been billed in a long time. We're still finding some of those, and we hope that as soon as the Springbrook utility billing software has been installed a hundred percent, we're going to be able to compare what's in the old computer system and the new, maybe discover a few more accounts that hadn't been billed or were put on inactive or whatever. So there may be some additional revenue that the city will pick up as we find these errors, but the fact of collections really is a matter of cash flow, and that just has to do with policies about delinquencies and penalties and, you know, whether shut offs occur.
Maggie, what's that Springbrook program is in? I see we're contract utility billing service right now? Is that gonna-
Oh, that's the third millennium. That's the people who print the bills, print and mail the bills.
Oh, it's not like because we're putting in the program, it's going to be, that expense is going away.
When we get to information technology, you'll see that the money for the last installment of the Springbrook software, plus the annual maintenance fees, are all in the information technology fund. This is strictly the water and sewer operations.
All right, and backup well, the rehabilitation, that's, is it the backup wells? I mean, are we still trying to get funding from the state or somebody on that?
Yes, we are. I think Mr. Home can tell you more about that.
My understanding is that we're continuing to pursue trying to get funding through the DuPage Water Commission. We have funds in the current fiscal year budget for the backup wells. It's anticipated that we're going to be doing more work in next year's fiscal budget. The IEPA just issued their inspection of our facilities notifying us that the current well that is down needs to be up and running by the end of July. So with respect to that well, we may not be able to wait much longer before we have to make a decision and go forward. So this is just for ongoing maintenance and really rehabilitation of our three emergency backup wells. And if we do receive funds from the DuPage Water Commission, we'll certainly incorporate those. We should receive word back from the DuPage Water Commission sometime in March with discussions with Attorney Bond. If we don't hear back from March, we may have to proceed with, you know, doing some of the backups. We may not be able to wait much longer.
Okay, anyone have any?
Just to kind of piggyback on to what Maggie said about getting Springbrook online. In addition to that, between the utility billing clerk and the public utilities meter reader and meter service department, we are finding and correcting a lot of old problems in an effort to make sure that when we go to Springbrook, it's as pure as possible. And so that's going to help this fund out as well, vetting out some of these languishing issues.
Anyone have anything on that?
Just as a wrap up on enterprise funds in general, you notice the first slide said these are operated like business entities, and they are supposed to be self-sustaining. So you would not think about putting transfers from other funds into the operating funds. Basically, they should, whatever rate structure they have, it should support the operation. And in the instance where you issue water and sewer revenue bonds, there are things called bond covenants that actually require a fund to have either a sinking fund set up or a certain amount of reserves every year, and you have to hit that. So you have to set your rates according to the bond covenants in order to get the bond issue done in the first place. Okay, now we're going to move on to special revenue funds. These are funds that basically have one type of revenue, and that revenue is restricted by its source. So the first one we have is the road and bridge fund. Every year, the road and bridge fund receives a road and bridge tax levy from the township, and then it earns some interest income on the money that it has in its cash accounts. We're limited in what we can do with those funds. They have to be used for highways and streets, or street lighting, things like that, get about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. And right now, we've got utility bills, preventive roadway maintenance, we've got street light maintenance, and a transfer to the capital projects fund of seventy-five thousand dollars. It's a relatively straightforward fund because it's only got the one revenue source, and I think it's safe to say it's been used the same way for probably the last ten years. Not much has changed. Next fund is the tourism fund. I'm sorry, how did we get there? Next fund is the motor fuel tax fund. We talked about this at the last meeting, basically because the idea was proposed of taking a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar transfer out of this fund, putting it in the general fund to defray some of the street department salaries. And that's what's reflected here in the motor fuel tax budget. But these monies are considered shared revenues. They come to Wooddale based on the population of the city, and we, right now, are talking about maybe four hundred thousand dollars a year. Traffic signals, snow and ice, electricity are the normal operating expenses that come out of this fund. We also have the lease payments. Earlier, Alderman Police was talking about buying or leasing vehicles. And I guess it's safe to say that in this budget this year, we've tried to balance purchases and leases so that we've got a little of both. Because paying twenty percent more for the life of an asset, in some cases, makes sense. And in fact, the first year, we put leases, capital leases and motor fuel tax was when the Vector was purchased, which was an enormous expense, and it was the night that some of these council members will remember where we had fifteen fixes to the budget, and that was one of them. And we, everybody knew the Vector was needed and there was no other source of money. So that's how the leasing going through motor fuel tax started. But essentially, if you can get the Department of Transportation to approve your expenditure, and it is street-related, you can cover personnel, you can cover maintenance and operations, you can cover salaries. So I guess it's safe to say that what we tried to do was use a mixture of items coming out of motor fuel tax, not any one thing. And the two hundred and thirty thousand dollar transfer to the general fund is what helped erase that deficit that we started with.
I know Christine Winger has a question on this because she called me on it. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, you know, after I looked at this depiction, it really hit home on, you know, what we're doing, and I'm very comfortable leaving it in the motor fuel tax fund. We, in the past, we weren't taking allotments of this size and putting it in the general fund, and then, so we should really use this money for what it's earmarked for in a clearly defined fund. So I'm certainly not comfortable putting it in the general fund. And if we are concerned about a deficit that, an overall deficit, that I think that's something that we're going to address as we go through these different accounts, and then we could look closer where our high costs are and how we handle them. So I don't want to see us handle, you know, a potential budgeting deficit situation by moving funds from other funds just to take care of that. Thank you.
Maggie Coles?
Alderman Winger, you'll notice that in the proposed budget, we have two hundred and thirty thousand dollars going to the general fund, and then after that, just a hundred and fifty, because really, you would get the motor fuel tax down too low. I think Alderman Shockey had made that point at the last meeting that this would be forever, and I got the impression he was not necessarily in favor of it either. But we could just as easily put the salaries in the motor fuel tax fund. We don't have to move the money to the general fund. We could just put some of the people in the motor fuel tax fund that work in the street department. Doesn't make any difference. It's the same money. This is more of an accounting convention, easier for us to track by making one transfer. But we could put the salaries and the payroll taxes in here, too.
Okay, but then we have a street division, correct?
Yes, and that is in the general fund.
I have to say, it's just too much moving around right now, and if we haven't done it in the past, I'm not sure why, you know, all of a sudden, we're trying to do it now. It's not to say that, you know, we couldn't, but, and plus, if it's a people thing, I'm always leaning towards having all of our, I'd like to see them all in one fund so we know the true cost of employees. And I see this trend of splitting it out, and next thing you know, tourism has fifty thousand dollars for, like, some kind of staffing. And so I'd like to see us eventually get streamlined so we know the true cost of staff.
Well, you will never see that because the enterprise funds have to have their own people, completely separate from the general fund. Okay? So you'll never ever see all the staff in one place. You have, however, gotten quite a few reports from us showing total cost of total staff and total staffing levels, both full-time and part-time. That all was given to the council before we started these budgets to give you the framework that you needed to understand the budgets. As far as transfers go, if you look at this motor fuel tax fund, we have two hundred and thirty going to general this year. Last year, or this current year that we're in, two hundred and twenty-one went to capital projects. The year before that, four hundred and seventy thousand went to capital projects, and before that, a hundred and ninety.